Welcome to the public hearing. Today is May 1st, 2023. It is 6:07. Sheila Rolcall.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Here.
Mayor Crisati.
Here.
Councilor Despard.
Here.
Councilor Finger.
Here.
Councilor Hopkins.
Here.
Councilor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Nelson. Councilor Pisner.
Here.
Councilor Santinella is absent. And Councilor Ungary.
Here.
Ten members are present, one is absent.
The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current on Friday, April 21st, 2023. Town of Enfield Legal Notice. The Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut on Monday, May 1st, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. to allow interested residents an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed annual operating and capital budget for the fiscal year of July 1, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, dated this 18th day of April, 2023. Sheila M. Bailey, Town Clerk. Item 3, the announcing of the ground rules for the public hearing. There is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. After each person who desires and had his one chance to speak, I shall permit those individuals a second chance. And those individuals who desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals a desire how many more times you need to come up. Please refrain from personalities when you do come up and talk. And before I start calling people up, I'm going to bring it over to our town manager, Ellen Zappu Sasu, for a couple of comments.
Good evening, members of the town council. I have condensed the overall presentation that you saw last week for the benefit of the public, who may be here tonight, and those watching from home, to give them a baseline of where we are in the budget process. As you all know, you are just beginning your deliberations. So what we're dealing with, again, is the Christmas wish list of all the departments and what they would like, from equipment to operational changes, to some that have been doing some strategic planning and restructuring. And from this vantage point of where we start, you, tonight was the first night where you heard from Sheila Bailey, our town clerk, about her budget. We have several select budgets that you will be looking at over the next week, including our largest ones. Public Works and Water Pollution Control will be featured on Wednesday night's public hearing, starting at 6:00. On Thursday night at 6:00, you will be hearing from the Police Department and the IT Department, which are closely linked with a lot of goals. And on Monday, May 8th, we will reconvene and start talking about fund balance and our debt, and all of the special funds, like health insurance, trust, et cetera, and how all of that feeds into what that bottom line number is going to be. But to begin with, I'll just quickly review for the viewing public. This is what our budget looks like compared to last year, and we also did the year before. Our grand list for real estate, personal property, and motor vehicle. We have seen an increase, which is a good thing. And from there is where we base some of our opportunities for revenue and growth within the budget. So, right now, we have a $39,553,377 growth. We have $923,000 in new tax revenue. And based on Board of Assessment Appeal activity that was filed on Friday, $892,000 was reduced off of that grand list. Proposed, there we go. And again, just a quick review. This is where the town gets its revenues. We collect taxes. We collect fees associated with license and permits. We charge for certain services. We have some investment earnings. And then we have our grants that come in. And then we have some miscellaneous other financing sources, and that's what it enters into. The good news is you see more increases than decreases in that column, so that is holding steady. The state actually contributes a significant amount of income to the town. So we have our pilot, where we get money in return for state-owned property. We have our town aid road grant, which is very large. We have additional grants for municipal projects. We have the municipal revenue sharing, which is given to most municipalities. And we have our, what's commonly referred to as the Pequot money. So all of that is, at this point, flat funded. And we are hoping that there is a slight increase in our education cost-sharing piece, and we'll be talking more about that later. And I will say that we have the superintendent and the assistant superintendent here tonight. If there's any hard questions, I'm going to send them over to them. So combined, here's what it looks like when we break down our budget. We have the town side, and right now, that would be the increase if everybody got absolutely everything that they asked for, and you, as a policymaking body, didn't make a single change. And the board is asking to be funded at the same level for the same services they've been providing, and their percentage at this point is 3.96. And I think here is a good time to say that. We'll be talking later on on one of the later slides, is the state legislature is still in session. We do not know, other than some, you know, preliminary conversations and some reports out of CCM that Finance Director Wilcox has received, we're not sure what our allocation is. And if you remember, last year, there was a hue and cry because we were designated an alliance district, promised a certain amount of resources to go along with that, and then that never came. So there's a whole bunch of unsettled financial issues around that, that I think are going to play into how we structure that Board of Ed piece as we go through our deliberations. So the viewing public is always interested in this. So I, again, went through and I listed the previous mil rates. So fiscal year '21, and for the next year, fiscal year '22, the town held steady at 34.23 mils. Then, last year, because of revaluation, the town council dropped it to 27.89 in recognition of the shift in values, but also in order to accommodate the residents. Because the shift in values hit the residential side of the grand list much more than it hit the commercial side. If I recall, it was something like 17% for residential and 6% or 8% for commercial. So we wanted to make sure that the residents weren't bearing a larger tax burden than what was absolutely necessary. For tonight's discussion only, and you see in parentheses, I've used the word "proposed", what we have backed into is a 31.67 mil rate for discussion purposes. So again, this is how we calculate a mil rate. It is for every $1,000 of taxable value. We then assess that at 70% of market value of the property, so that's the assessment. And right now, if you look at that, for a home in Enfield worth $200,000, the property taxes would be $4,268. $200,000 at 70% of an assessed value, which brings it to 140,000, that would bring that. One mil is equivalent to $3.5 million. So for every mil that you'd like to cut from the budget, we need to find $3.5 million worth of expenses. So here's where some of the increases are that we've talked about previously. We have salaries, we have benefits, we have purchased professional and technical services, property services. We're reduced in other purchase services, supplies and materials, including utilities, and then some of the other smaller ones. Debt service for leases has reduced. You'll hear more about that from the IT budget on Thursday night. We have some capital transfers, transfers to other funds. So we are looking at $8.5 million increases at face value. For salaries, in order to be transparent, we wanted to show where the new positions are. We are asking for an increase in the Finance Department by adding a purchasing assistant because there's so much that flows through that position. And we really want to be able to move that business, get the most competitive bids, be out into the market at a reasonable time, and take advantage of all of that. So we're requesting that that position be added. We are requesting another teacher within the child daycare at STO. And then we are requesting a program coordinator within the Recreation Division. And again, that position is revenue-driven. The more programs we can have and the more people involved in the quality-of-life piece that we do at a recreation, we will create revenue from those programs. So the total of new positions being suggested for this year amounts to $166,417. And it's important to note as well, and the assistant town manager covered this a couple of weeks ago, we are constantly evaluating vacant positions, and we have eliminated several from the budget. We have consolidated. And we have also assigned additional duties, of which you have been part of that process over the course of the last 15 months, where there's been additional compensation added to key positions when other positions have been eliminated. Again, trying to really tighten that circle and ensure that our workforce is solid, that they're compensated appropriately, because right now, it is an employee market. So we are continuing to be as competitive as we can in attracting the best people, as well as retaining the best people. These are our contractual and mandatory increases that a lot of people have asked about, so we're breaking them out. The health insurance, we had been forecasting 6%. Luckily, now, we are going to be able to forecast a zero, based on the latest data that we got. I think that was Friday.
Last week.
Last week. So we are going to be able to save some money there, based on our claims experience, so that was good news. The contractual union increases, we have some debt service and the Police Accountability Act. Somebody did ask us if those costs had decreased. They are still present because they are ongoing within the operations of the Police Department, and Chief Fox will address more of that next week, or Thursday. So next Monday, May 8th, is the night that we will be talking mostly about the capital and long-term improvement projects. But for everybody who is here tonight and a part of the process, I think it's important to just quickly review the fact that we are looking at several life safety upgrades to the schools that we will continue to make improvements upon, while at the same time, we explore the opportunities that you and the Board of Education are talking about in terms of what the long-term look looks like for elementary schools in Enfield. Public Works Engineering, vital services. We don't have enough capacity in-house to do everything that needs to be done, so we contract with outside services. The town facilities, a lot of projects you're going to see listed under that when you see it, the hard copies in your folder. We have some equipment needs. We have some storm sewer relining that we like to do every year to keep up. We have some public works projects, and then we have some non-public works projects that are delineated. And then we have our vehicle replacement plan. I have noted water pollution control here, too. As much as they are their own nonrecurring fund, that is the amount that is attached to that line item for this fiscal year. Also, on Monday, we are going to be talking about the use of fund balance. So again, for those who are tuning in, the town has a rainy day savings account, and we are required to keep 9% of our operating budget within that fund at all times. That number is shown as $13,714.26. So after that, we have some remaining fund balance, and there is some use of that to be discussed, hopefully, for our CIP list on Monday. There is always concerns about the sewer use fees and about how we're going to tackle some of these long-term projects, so I've included this slide again, just to give the public the sense of what we're up against. We need just about $4 million just to design and replace the pump stations. 15 of them, all of them, actually need to be upgraded. We have $2 million available in the capital nonrecurring, which unfortunately did not have, there were some years where there were less contributions than others, so it's a little behind where we would like to see it. We have to determine which ones can be done in an orderly fashion. One of them, one of the smaller ones, is about a $250,000 upgrade. But there's one that's going to cost us 4.5. So that gives you the range of the scope of what these projects look like, that we're going to have to schedule out for the next few years. And for everybody's recollection, you, as a town council, made the decision to allocate almost $3 million of ARPA funds to go toward this project in order to lessen the impact on the taxpayers. So right now, again, recommended is the base rate and the volumetric usage charges, as you see them currently, what was adopted last year, and what we're recommending, which is a $6 increase per quarter, in order to continue to put money into that fund so that we can use that, plus ARPA, in order to start making these very necessary improvements. So obviously, the quality of life is something that you're going to be taking into consideration as you make all of these budget decisions. And I just want to, again, say that I think there's been a lot of great work done by this town council over the last year and a half. There's shovels in the ground, there's long-term projects being realized, there's conversations being had with the public, there's community engagement, and there's some long-term investments happening. So all of this is part of how we make these budget decisions, and that will continue. And then, again, one of the things that you've done to insulate one of our populations is you expanded and added to the tax relief opportunities for seniors so that they could age in place in their homes and the communities in which they're based, with their friends, with their medical services, with their churches, and their community groups. And this is something that has really been popular, and people are already calling about both of them. So the senior and disabled tax relief program that was in place, it's now expanded for income that goes up to $60,000. And the senior volunteer tax relief has no income requirements. Any senior over the age of 65 or over can volunteer X number of hours. They are eligible then for getting a letter from the senior center with those hours certified with their organization, and they are eligible for $400 in a tax credit for their July 1st, 2024 grand list bill. So before we hear from the public, the charge for you to keep in mind as we move forward over the next week is that we definitely need to look for further reductions and changes in order to hopefully mitigate some of those increases. We have to hear from the state about our alliance fund status and how that becomes a piece of this puzzle. We also have unresolved state budget allocation and revenue issues. They don't adjourn until after we adopt our budget, so this is going to be somewhat challenging. That's the schedule, so people who are watching from home can tune in. Public Works Wednesday night, Police and IT Thursday night, and then everything else on Monday. There's always room next week to have additional meetings, but per charter, we must adopt our budget on May 15th. Also, just for everyone who is here, the, this presentation, the one from April 17th, and the Board of Ed presentation are all online on the town manager's website, where you can go in and you can access it. I believe that it's also in a couple of other places as well. And if anybody needs specific information, we do have extra budget books that are here for the public, and people can call our office, and we can make them available to anyone else who is not able to join us tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we will be opening up the public hearing. I do have a list. I will be calling people up. The first person I would like to call up is Kelsey McGuire Bruce.
Hi, my name is Kelsey McGuire Bruce, and I live at 63 Neelens Road. I am an Enfield teacher, and while my focus here tonight is not to speak about the school's budget, I will say this. The budget our superintendent has presented needs to be passed. Honestly, it probably isn't even enough of an ask. As a teacher, I can tell you our plates are full. We are continually asked to do more with less. We care about our students, we want the best for all of our kids. But if you walk the halls of a school today and really look at a teacher, you will see they cannot give any more. I heard many of you a few weeks ago speak about how you value our schools when we had the K-25 modernization meeting in these chambers. I left that meeting feeling rejuvenated. So many positive things said about our school district. I hope those words will be spoken even louder when considering the budget needs of our great schools. The future of our children and our town depends on it. Enfield Public Schools is a great place to learn and work, but without a budget that supports the needs of our student and staff, how can that continue? So please fund our schools. But now, for my primary focus here tonight, is to speak about the Town Celebrations and Special Events Budget Line. In addition to being a teacher, I am a director of both the Enfield Fourth of July Town Celebration and the Jack-o'-lantern Festival. These events, along with Family Day, parades, and many others, are an important part of the community that Enfield is. Each of these events is special, no one greater than the other. Each event is a time for families to gather together on our green, to see old friends and meet new ones. It's a time for our children to have new experiences and to honor some of the great town traditions and the people that started them. I was born here in Enfield, and I attended these events as a child, and now I am grateful that my own children will grow up with some of these memories. I know I'm not alone in that. These town traditions mean even more when sharing them with your own kids. I understand the cost it takes for the town to support these events. While many of these events are funded with sponsorships and donations and the tireless hours of the committees that plan them, they would not and could not go on without the support of our town. The town budget for these events covers essentials for our events to run. For those who may not know, the essentials include police, EMT, fire, and public works, to name a few. Without the town's supports, these events won't be able to continue, and I am here tonight to encourage you all to look at that budget line that covers the celebrations and special events. I know that many of you here on the council support these events, and I thank you for that. I also know the cost to fund these events has increased, like everything else, over the past few years. I wanted to speak tonight to remind you that these events are a large part of our town's traditions and its charm. I am fortunate enough, as a director of some of these events, to hear from people who love them. Just last year, at the Jack-o'-lantern Festival, I heard from someone who just moved to Enfield. She was in awe of the sense of community created by the events on the green all year long. Tonight, I'm here because I want to make sure that the number our town manager presented to you is passed so that we can continue to keep fostering and growing that sense of community within our town. So please keep this in mind when you are voting on the budget. We need to continue to support the great town events that make Enfield so special. And again, thank you for your ongoing support of these incredible community celebrations and all you do for our town.
Okay, thank you. Next, Nicole Markot.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Markot, 5 Hill Cross Road. My name is Nicole, and I'm here as one of the co-directors of the beloved Jack-o'-lantern Festival that has been a fall staple activity for the families of Enfield for more than 20 years. This year, the festival will be held on October 21st. The committee is starting preparations for this festival. We hope the town itself, along with the support of the schools and local businesses, will help keep our event going. We want to extend a thank you to the town, the grounds crew, our sponsors in the community for the amazing festival that we had last year and hope to have next. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Chris Fontaine.
I am here as the Assistant Chairman of the Fourth of July Celebration Committee and in support of the Celebrations and Special Events line item. As you know, it does take quite a lot of money to put these events on. The Fourth of July is a benefit of being the first one to go through after the budget goes on. We take up quite a bit of the money, but we are also in support of all the other events that go on as well. The cost has risen significantly over the years. I think the budget hasn't been updated in quite a while to reflect those costs. So I just would like to thank you guys for all your support for the celebration, as well as the other events that go on, and would encourage you to, you know, adopt a higher budget to incur these costs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Stacy Dagel.
Is that better? Okay. Stacy Dagel. Live at 55 Cottage Road in Enfield. The budget you set aside to aid the events in town is phenomenal. I think it's what sets Enfield apart from other towns, because you're always willing to fund community events that affects everyone in town as a community. It's a great way to bring the people of this community together. There are thousands that come to these events, like the event that I'm a director on the July 4th, one, the race director. But including a lot of you here, we see a lot of you there at the events. They're just special to a lot of people in town, including us. We just want to keep these great traditions and events alive, so please keep the budget, the money in the budget, to help us out with these all great events. Not only the July 4th, but Jack-o'-lantern and everything else that goes on in town. It's really important, I think, to the kids growing up in this town, as we did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Next, Donna Dubonowsky.
Good evening. Donna Dubonowsky, 23 Betty Road. After reading the town manager's proposed budget, I guess I have to ask, how we can justify an 11% increase? I know she's mentioned that this is a Christmas wish list in the newspaper, and everybody, department just requests astronomical numbers to see what we can get in the end and hope that you guys pass it. I don't know who prepares a town budget on a Christmas wish list. We didn't hire you to play Santa Claus. We expected, what I expected, was a serious budget. We want to keep all these great services, but how do we expect us to take this budget seriously? We didn't really look carefully. What you should have done was really look carefully and scrutinize the numbers, and what we need and what we can actually afford, instead of a double-digit increase or your Christmas wish list. Do you realize the impact this is going to have per homeowner? If someone owns a property, and with approximately a $200,000 value, we're going to increase, what, another $1,000 on top of the $4,000 we're already paying in taxes? People need to understand the impact that this will have on them. By lowering the taxes and the mil rate in 2022, 23, you know, right before an election, and then increasing it after the election to, you know, an additional 13.6 million, and a million, and a mil rate increase to 31.67 mils, do we really think this isn't going to go unnoticed by the voting taxpayer residents? We're looking for, we're looking at a $13.6 million tax increase in 2024, and a rate, a mil rate of 3.7. That's an increase. It's a 13.3% increase the year after an election. I hope that homeowners, do you really think that the homeowners can afford to have this huge increase, especially at this time? Many live on a fixed income, and the everyday expenses at the grocery store, gas station, insurance, utilities, town taxes, they all have increased, and pretty soon, no one will be able to live here. And I ask about the water patrol, pollution control numbers. If I'm reading the numbers correctly, the expenditure is almost double the amount from '22 to '23. And with the increase, the residents will feel on that is approximately a million dollars each year. That's a $1 million in 2023, and then another million in 2024. And I ask, how can residents afford this? This budget needs some extreme cuts, really deep cuts, and you all need to make sure that happens. It's not affordable for the average homeowner. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope you take into consideration that most of the residents can't afford any increases in their taxes, never mind these crazy amounts. And my Christmas wish list is no new taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Leslie Cunningham.
Good evening, council members. Is this on? It's on now. Okay. I think many of you know I'm president of the Shaker Pines Lake Association. I live at 26 Wheeler Drive. And I'm here tonight to represent the Lake Association, and thank you for honoring your commitment to share the ARPA and the capital improvement funds in the amount of $151,000 in support of the Shaker Pines spillway repair. One of the important stated uses of the ARPA funding is for storm water management, and that's really what the spillway is all about. This funding benefits not only the Shaker Pines Lake Association, but a very large section of Enfield and the town as well. I'd like to remind the council of the materials that we provided you as you considered our request for funding last August, I believe. And I believe Councilor Nelson may not have had the benefit of these materials, as my recollection is, is the evening of the vote, he was brought onto the council, or shortly thereafter. So if he didn't get to see them, I'd like that he be able to see them, because the materials illustrate how the water flows through the town if we don't control it from the spillway, and it's a pretty significant impact. Much of the presentation was created from our state and federally mandated dam emergency action plan, and that is what I have here. It was updated significantly in 2018 by engineers of GZA, Geo-Environmental Services in Springfield. This is something that we're required to do and update on a regular basis. It gives us an assessment of the risks and the responses for emergencies related to the spillway and the dam. It gives us an assessment of the risks and the responses for emergencies related to the spillway and the dam. It also recommends best practices for monitoring and maintenance of the spillway and our dam. Just as a note, in addition, the spillway and the dam must be inspected by professional engineers every five years. So that's an additional thing that we do to monitor the dam and the spillway to make sure that it's safe. The most informative portion of this dam emergency action plan for the purposes of the council was the flood inundation and evacuation plan. This portion clearly shows that the repairs benefit the town because the waters travel from Shaker Pines Lake through the Jaw Brook and then it eventually joins the Freshwater Brook as well and eventually out through the Connecticut River. So the waters travel all through the town. The areas that are impacted are Bacon Road, Cozy Street, North Maple Street, The Laurel's, Brook Road, Oakwood Street, Glenwood Street, Shaker Road, Pearson Way, Elm Street, Moody Road, Quail Hollow, Georgetown Drive, Palumba Drive, Cranbrook Drive, Freshwater Boulevard, Hazard Avenue, Clermont, Denunzio, Lynch Terrace, O'Hare, Meadow Street, Mountain View, and Enfield Street. And we provided you with maps that, in the red area, there's Shaker Pines Lake and then the red travels all down through town. I know that you've noticed in the area of the car dealerships, sometimes there's a lot of water there. That's some of our water. So if that's not taken care of properly, everybody's in trouble. So I just wanted to come back and remind you of how important it is for us to take care of this spillway. Also, one of the sewer pumping stations is right at the lake. And thank you for listening to us and realizing that this impacts much more than our lake community if we have flooding. And that's it. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Sheila, is there anybody else that signed up?
No, there is not.
Okay. Would anybody like to approach the council a second time? Well, I can't go to the third if there's no second, so you're going to make it real easy for me. So going once, twice, three times, I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you very much and thank you for everybody that came and spoke tonight. Thank you.
That blows my mind. $13.5 million.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting. Today is Monday, May 1st, 2023, 7:00 PM at the council chambers. The Enfield Town Council regular meeting. The meeting can also be viewed on YouTube. I'd like to take this opportunity as a moment of reflection as we wind down the month to autism awareness and for the inclusion for adults and children with disabilities. The power of community was clearly evident in Enfield last weekend as a unified event that was held at Enfield High School. Members of the Enfield Police Department, fire departments, along with students and teachers from Enfield High, and members of the unified sports teams and Allied Stars athletes took part in a volleyball tournament. This is a clear example of how our community is embracing adults and children who have social communication and at times behavioral issues, and to be included in the events in our town is very special. At this time, let us think for a moment about a family you know and how you can do your part in developing a sense of community for all. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Sheila Rolcall, please.
Mayor Crissati.
Here.
Councilor Despard.
Here.
Councilor Finger.
Here.
Councilor Hopkins.
Here.
Councilor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Nelson.
Here.
Councilor Pisner.
Here.
Councilor Santinella is absent. Councilor Angier.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Here.
Ten members are present, one is absent.
Fire evacuation announcement. In the event of a fire, there are exits in the back of the chambers and to my left and the audience's right, exit through the doors and go downstairs into the parking lot. Minutes of preceding meetings. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting, April 17th, 2023? So moved. Counselor Nelson.
Second.
And a second by Counselor Pisner. All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention? All right, so we have nine in favor, one abstention. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting, April 17th, 2023? So moved. Counselor Mangini, a second by Counselor Nelson. All in favor? And abstentions, oppositions? Okay, ten in favor. It's unanimous. One absent. All right. There are no special guests this evening. Next, public communications, as we're moving right along. Just a couple of things I've mentioned once again before we open our public communications, I just would like to remind everyone that you'll have five minutes to address the council. Refrain from personal attacks or any personnel matters. We're not going to respond during the public comment. And as a reminder to everyone, this is not a forum to air grievances or discuss town employees. So when you come on up, please state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody who would like to approach the council? Jack?
Jack Sheridan.
You're on.
Well, I came to actually speak at the budget presentation, but I missed that. But the reason I'm here, first, I'd like to make an observation. Over the years, 50 years, I've seen the dais up there change every once in a while. And it's amazing how many of the people who sit up there, when they retire, they move out of town. They move to a town where they get to vote on their budget. I think that's something you should just kind of keep in your mind. That includes school, board of ed, people also. And the cost, this budget, to me, is out of control. And the reason I say that is you're buying and spending on frivolous things that in the future, how do you continue to support them? I myself, United Healthcare, that's a gap insurance, right? Everybody knows what it is. Mine went up $24 a month, so now it's $307 a month, just for gap insurance. My electric bill went to $225. Everything's up, gas, everything, food, and so I'm saving on haircuts. I don't know what else, you know? I mean, you hear people say, well, you know what? You can switch to some less expensive food. But, you know, there's just so much, there is no less expensive food anymore when eggs are what they cost. So I'm just here to try and bring a little dose of reality to what it's like at 85 years old and you're trying to pay your bills. And I hope you'll consider the fact that there's a lot of people in this town that are fighting the fight and trying to make ends meet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council this evening?
Robert Bukowski, 21 Francis Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Just a few things on the Francis Avenue Jimmy's Pub issue. I'd like to submit a police activity report, which verifies the issues that we've been speaking about regarding Francis Avenue and Jimmy's Pub. My neighbor will be submitting a petition signed by 26 residents of Francis Avenue out of 31 households. We're requesting resident parking only. She'll be submitting some photos, which again verify the issues. Excuse me. I'd like to request that you bring this issue to a vote in a timely manner and vote in favor of permanent resident-only parking. There are details regarding parking stickers, removable placards, temporary permits for large gatherings, which have been discussed previously and which can easily be resolved. This problem does require your help to be adequately resolved. It'll not be resolved adequately through planning and zoning only. Francis Avenue is the most convenient place to park for the patrons of Jimmy's Pub. Regardless of approval or denial of any entertainment permits, it's still going to be the best parking place for the pub, even with no parking signs. Permanent resident-only parking signs are required, along with proper enforcement. In my opinion, that would be towing similar to the Scannick. And that's it. If I can submit my document, I'll be done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Who can I give this to?
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to approach the council?
Hi, Susan Budd, 2 Francis Avenue. May I approach the council before I talk? I have a petition to give to somebody, but I also just, I have two sets of photos starred at each end. I would like one copy back if that's, the other can be kept for the file. I don't really have a lot to say this evening, except for I would appreciate you just viewing the pictures, so it's backup to what we've been complaining about for the last six months. And just, I don't know what our street is turning into on Friday night. I don't even know how to say this. There was two cars, it turned into, both people got into the backseat of one car right in front of my house for like 20 minutes, got out, kind of like fixed their clothes, kissed, and then goodbye. So it's just stuff like that, that, it's still a residential street, not a parking lot or not anything. And that's really all I want to say tonight, short and sweet, but just to view those pictures, I'd appreciate it, just as backup.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council?
Yeah, I would.
Joel Budd, 2 Francis Avenue. I'd just like to ask the question, has anybody resolved this yet, or have we done anything about it? Have you talked to the people over at the parking lot across the street to see if, I'm assuming that's a no-go?
No, I can respond during the report.
Yeah, we cannot respond back and forth. You can talk to us, and then during a report, she can respond.
Oh, well, I guess that's it then, nothing, nothing's been done? So it is getting worse. I mean, it's just, Friday night, we had 10 cars in front of the first four houses down there. We called the police at about 11 o'clock, they came down, they ticketed five cars, five of them left. 1:00 in the morning, three more cars came down. Every time a car comes down, somebody gets out of the car, slams the door, starts talking, the dog starts going crazy. I mean, it's just, it's just gotten out of hand. I mean, way out of hand. So something's got to be done, and to wait until July for the outcome is ridiculous because we know it's not going to change. So somebody's, somebody's got to speak up and do something now, and never mind until That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council this evening? Okay, declare public communications over. Next, Councilor Communications, Counselor Mangini.
Thank you. I just have a couple of items through our mayor to our town manager. If you could, Ellen, please give us a status update on the Rotary Playground at the library. A few weeks ago, I reported how the, whatever floor, it's not grass, it's some sort of an artificial product that's being chunked up, and it could become hazardous when kids are playing, if we could get an update on that. And also, on Middle Road, there are two situations happening here. One, number 85 Middle Road, there's a very large branch stuck in the wires, electric wires. It's been there since, I'd say, November, December, and at some point, I thought it was going to be removed by Dorothy's Utilities or somebody, and it's still there. So maybe you could look at that. At some point, it's going to come crashing down on somebody's car or a child because it's right near the school. And then on number 70 Middle Road, which is almost diagonally across the street, you've got a payloader or some sort of a truck parked on a person's lawn, and there's a big cut in the road, on Middle Road, and there are cones around it, and it appears to be some work that is being done or had been done, but it stopped being done. Cars are going around the cut so that they don't have to drive through it, but then you've got ongoing traffic coming in the other direction, and at some point, there could be an accident. And again, that's where kids walk. So I'm a little bit concerned, you know, about the safety of those kids. And then finally, the other issue I want to bring to your attention and through our mayor to our town manager. Back in 2018, a resolution was passed regarding the Captain Thomas Abbey statue, and the town agreed and the council supported the ownership of this monument. And right now, it needs to be cleaned, it needs to have the area cleaned up. And I know Bill Lee, at some point, went with some scrubbing material and a brush, and he cleaned it up himself. But this is actually the town's responsibility, and, you know, we have been negligent in that respect. So what we'd like to, we, the Daughters of American Revolution, would like to see, you know, the town take ownership. You've got broken bricks, you've got weeds that are all, you know, growing in, and, you know, it really is an eyesore for our town. So I just want to bring that forward as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Despard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one thing. So this Saturday, May 6th, Matt's Sports Cards in Hazardville, they are celebrating their 49th anniversary in business. They're teaming up with National Free Comic Book Day and a local food shelf to put on like an anniversary bash. So you can go there, get a free comic, you can get up to two free comics, and then it's really cool, every can you donate after that, you can get another comic, you can, you know, donate five cans and get like a graphic novel. There's also going to be like some other just cool stuff going on there that day. But it would just be a great way to, you know, get some free comic books and support a business that's been here for a very, very long time, so.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go to Counselor Pisner, and then we're going to go to Counselor Angier.
I just wanted to have everybody listening at home and sitting here to mark their calendars for May 28th at 1:00 PM. The Veterans Council will be once again sponsoring their annual Memorial Day parade. This year, they're actually trying to make it a more community-friendly parade, and so if you have a group or an organization, a sports group, whatever like that, that you would like to march in the parade, you can contact Lucian LaFave, and I'm going to say his number, he said to tell everybody his phone number. It's 860-463-71. It's 860-463-7168. So please call Lucien. Again, you know, each year, our veterans go over and above to give us a Memorial Day Parade and a Veterans Day Parade. And, you know, it's kind of disheartening when we don't see a lot of people on the sidelines, you know, just going out there and respecting our veterans. So mark your calendars, and again, if you want to be in it, please contact him. And then just one quick note. The mayor and I were at Parkway Pavilion last week. He was there to do a proclamation, and I was there to congratulate a longtime friend of mine, Diane Sokol. Diane has worked at Parkway for 38 years, and she retired. And I am just going to say out loud, she is going to be sadly missed. She has done a tremendous job for our seniors in this town that chose Parkway to reside at. I can speak firsthandly, my mom lived there for three years, and she was, she always goes above and beyond. So I just want to give a shout out to Diane and thank her for all her years of service to the seniors in our community while she worked at Parkway. And I just hope, wish her a very happy, healthy, long retirement. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ungar.
Thank you. I wanted to announce this Thursday, they're having the National Day of Prayer on our town green out at the gazebo, and that will be at 6:30. So whatever faith you have, whatever church you attend, we're going to get a good crowd here, and we're going to pray for all things in our community. It's not going to be that long, but I invite you all to come out for that. Also, I wanted to just briefly explain again, when we say there's no going back and forth, a lot of people still don't understand that. When residents come up and they speak for a few minutes, you could get 11 answers all coming back at you, and whether you're addressing the council, our attorney, the town manager, we'd be here all night. And so what we try to do is let everyone come up, speak their piece, and then when it's our turn, we can respond back to you. So I don't know if that makes it any clearer for you, but that's what we mean when we say no back and forth. And I appreciate you bringing those pictures in, and we'll see if we can't get some answers for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Hopkins.
Thank you. Through the mayor to the town manager, I would also like an update, if that's okay, on the Jimmy's Pub parking situation. I had also raised the possibility of maybe enforcing this through a towing situation if, unfortunately, if the tickets are not being taken seriously by folks, that might be considered. I don't know if that's been discussed, I did raise it at a prior meeting, but I would love your thoughts on that, because this is a ridiculous situation. People should not have vomit and beer bottles in front of their houses every night. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public, Councilor Communications, and then after you, I just have a couple of things. Go ahead.
Okay. The parking situation. There's nothing we can do with the current situation. If he's within his license, there's nothing the council can do to stop that. So what the July meeting is for him to increase to the live entertainment. So we can't stop him from doing what he's doing right now. He's legally, he has a liquor license for karaoke, and no DJ, and if he's got live bands or something, that's different. He's not permitted to do that, and I believe he came and challenged his cease and desist, and he lost that. So he still can't do those things. But he is permitted to continue doing what he's doing. So, I mean, the crowds that's there, if they're there for his regular business, we really can't stop it. So, I mean, putting no parking on the streets, that's something that I think is going to have to be taken up with the police department and stuff like that, but there's a lot of streets in town that are fighting the same battle, and it's not up to us to shut down a street because of a business that's been there. The changes, I agree, but that's in July. I mean, I fought this fight for you, but you can't stop an existing business that was there. The changes, he's going through the channels, whether he gets them or not, and we tried. We helped you till the end of June or whatever, but when that decision comes out, it's out of our hands. We can't control planning and zoning and what they do. That's the meeting you guys want to be at and speak your voice, because they can make the changes that you're looking for. So I just wanted to be clear on that, and that's why I think we agreed that the end of June...
Can I address that?
No, you can come back up later.
I was going to ask to break the caller call so we can go back politely. I'll do it in my three minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. First of all, thanks for everybody that, you know, that did come to the public hearing and speak, and then secondly, the residents that did come up and, you know, still having your issues with parking. You know, thank you for the information, thank you for the pictures that you gave us and some of the information that you gave to the town clerk. We will definitely look into that. I do have a proclamation that I have to read tonight, and this is a proclamation that Kite asked me, and it's a proclamation declaring May 1st, which is today, through May 7th, Enfield Unplugged in Enfield. So I'm going to read a proclamation, and it says, "Whereas one of the Town of Enfield's priorities to protect children from harmful marketing and to promote commercial free time and space for all children, and whereas technology negatively impacts kids if they spend so much time on screens that they withhold eating, sleeping, doing their homework, and spending time with friends and families. Whereas too much screen time can cause physical ailments such as blurred vision, headaches, discomfort, and eye strain. Whereas the excessive use of technology can cause mental health issues such as depression and anxiety, it can also reduce self-confidence, life satisfaction, and emotional stability. Whereas when children learn to balance their digital screen usage with offline activities, the harms associated with digital screen use are decreased. Whereas the citizens of Enfield, Connecticut stand firmly committed to the health and welfare of its youngest citizens." And I should also probably add to that, our oldest, middle-aged citizens also with their screen times. Whereas the Town of Enfield is joining Kite, Enfield Public Schools Social Services, Family Resource Center, and the Enfield Child Development Center, and the Enfield Public Schools to host Enfield Unplugged Week, which takes place this week, May 1st to the 7th, as the community celebration where children and their families reduce and unplug from digital entertainment for one week to enjoy life beyond the screen. Therefore, be resolved that I, Robert Crisati, the mayor of the Town of Enfield, on behalf of the town council, the town administration, and the entire community do hereby proclaim this week, May 1st to the 7th, as Enfield Unplugged Week." And, you know, I'd like to be, I know I'm going to try to abide by this, my screen use is going to definitely go down this week. So I did say that we would honor this, and we'll move forward. But one other thing that I am going to mention, Councilor Sacala and I attended a business meeting with the Hispanic business community last night, and they did voice a couple of concerns that we will address moving forward. But there is one thing that I just want to just mention to the town manager. They do a lot of cultural activities outside of their businesses, and they get together. And I know that Mount Carmel has offered an area and a space for them, but I think we need more of a downtown location for them. So I'm asking if there's any space at the Alcorn Gymnasium for them to practice some of their ethnic dances that they do have. And I, you know, they're not asking, they're asking for like one night for a couple hours, and that's all that they're asking. And then also, a particular, maybe if we could look for them for a room for their attires and stuff, so that they don't have to keep lugging it back and forth. So that was a quick ask. I did want to just bring that to your attention tonight. One other thing I am going to mention, and Councilor Pizner did send everybody an email around for the Enfield produce. They're raising money for a mural that they want to put on the side of their building. Information has been disseminated to all of us, and I just wanted to just mention to the community that they really want to raise $10,000 and have the community, the artists would actually do all of the work, and it's almost like paint-by-numbers, where they would have community members, people like us, to go in and paint certain sections, which I think would be a nice community event. So I did say that I would, you know, further, you know, explain that cause that they have. They do have a GoFundMe page at Enfield Mural. So if there's any other information, I know Councilor Pizner has the information also, and, but I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, because that was brought up at the meeting that we attended last night. So, so thank you very much for that. All righty, moving on to town manager report.
Okay, so, not necessarily in order, but in terms of some of the questions tonight from the council, the Rotary Playground is not currently on the capital improvement list. I have sent an email to see if they have in fact gotten the price back, but we do believe that the price for replacing that surface was going to be in excess of $100,000, and so we'll have to see what that looks like when we get to the CIP deliberations, but I can update you if they've received a bid back yet. And in terms of Thomas Abbey, there was actually an agreement made a few years back that $480 is given to the Enfield Congregational Church each year as payment for the right-of-way and lease, and with that money, they are supposed to maintain that area. I do believe that there's plenty of opportunities for partnerships with private groups, but in fact, that is, the arrangement that's in place right now is that they are paid to maintain that area as part of a right-of-way lease. The Jimmy's Pub Francis Avenue situation, there's a couple things that I'm going to recommend to you tonight. The petition that's been received, I would recommend to the town council that they formally refer that to the Traffic Division, because I think with a petition and a request from that community, the Traffic Division should weigh in on their ideas about formal resolution of this from a traffic standpoint, because we do have to adhere to certain traffic standards from the manual uniform control standard book that can and can't happen. So I think that that would be the best motion for you to make to begin with. I will also caution you, however, that some of the recommendations that may come back, that they suggest to you, that you recommend, may or may not be acceptable to certain groups in the neighborhoods, such as one-way parking, which side of the street for parking, the emergency access issues, which have been of concern to EMS, fire, and police over the course of the years. All of this may come into play with a formal referral to the Traffic Division, but I think it is the proper motion to make in order to respond to the petitioners who have come forward. Right now, in terms of short-term goals, Mr. Bedard cannot proceed with a site plan application without having parking identified to accompany that plan. So we all know that. He has been vigorously looking for people to agree to lease him space. That has not come to fruition. The spaces that have told him that they would be willing to do so fall outside of the 500-foot parameters that are set by planning and zoning. The big piece that remains to be seen is the across-the-street, the car hardware parking lot. And I have reached out once, and I will reach out again, and I just didn't have a chance to over the last few days, so that is on me, to that owner to try to induce them to cooperate. One of the things that we were prepared to offer was, would there be an increased comfort level for Mr. Frank if in fact the city offered to add them as additional insured? I don't know if that's a wise decision on our part, but we're trying to get at the piece of what the resistance is or what his reluctance is, and if there's some way that we could abate that in order for that situation to happen. The other piece that we have dealt with is, the police department has actually chosen a vendor for the ticketing software that needs to be in place in order to continue to maintain accountability. So right now, it's a manual system. It doesn't work well. So the ability to capture revenue is weakened. So having the software, which the one that was chosen, is a $14,000 annual fee. The chief will talk about this on Thursday, but I am recommending strongly that we move ahead with that purchase, whether with surplus funds, but not wait until July in order to implement that, because there is still some work that has to be done in order to get that up and running. That is a little bit ancillary to the Francis and Highland Park issues, but it's part of the future solution, because eventually, if you are a patron of any establishment or any place where parking is complicated, including the Scannic, and you are continually issued tickets, and you are continually disregarding them, and we do not have the software to follow up with you, that's a problem. With the software, we will eventually catch up with you, most likely at the time when you go to re-register your vehicle, it is going to show three or more parking tickets from the Town of Enfield, and you're stopped. You will not be able to register your vehicle. So carrot-and-stick type situations. It's an investment that I strongly recommend that we make from a quality-of-life standpoint. So we were scheduled to meet on Saturday morning again with the neighbor group and the owners of Jimmy's Pub. We have had intermittent meetings. We have tried some short-term solutions in order to assuage some of the issues. We had some of people on the street be insecure, and I understand why. Who's parked in front of my house, even up until the 10 o'clock time? Who's here? Who are these people? So we tried to do a staff parking. We have Mr. Bedard and members of his staff out at closing time in the street to kind of facilitate an orderly and quiet departure of the street parking. There have been tickets, I received the report from the chief on Monday, several tickets were issued over the weekend. I thought it was on Highlands, but I guess on Francis as well. So again, there's short-term issues, there's the longer-term issue, but there's also two significant policy pieces that you can act on, one being a referral to traffic tonight, and also listening to the chief as he makes the plea for getting that software in place so that there can be more accountability to people. Moving on, let's see, just a quick, National Prevention Week is starting next week, and the town has a bunch of activities planned in order to draw attention to substance misuse, to overdoses, to all of that. And what we can do as a community to abate some of those situations. All of you are on the distribution list. Whenever there's a Narcan save, the chief keeps us up to date with all of that stats, and I think we can all agree that there are way too many of those emails that we receive from Chief Fox. So what do we do? Well, one of the things that you had asked us to come together and do, and it is now being planned for during National Prevention Week, if you see on the screen, is the community conversation on opioids and substance misuse. It is going to be next Tuesday night at the JFK Middle School Auditorium. It is a free event, there will be dinner served, and we have different components that we're going to be covering that night, and we would like all members of the community to come and join us for that conversation. Participation is going to be Department of Social Services, Enfield EMS, the Police Department, North Central District Health Department, the Town of Enfield in general, and there are going to be guest speakers and then breakout groups to talk about what some of these issues are and how to provide support to the families within the community that might need it. So again, Tuesday, May 9th, you will be getting more information about that, and I'd encourage all of you who have social media platforms to share it. This will be scheduled to go out off the town manager's page, I think tomorrow or the next day. We've already done a Save the Day, and we could appreciate any support that you could give us in order to push this event. The more people that are seated in the auditorium that night, the better off we will be. The Earth Day events went very well, and we're going to get some data points about the items that were collected, which were diverted from the waste stream, which means money back in our pockets that we don't have to pay for processing. As you will see in the budget presentation Wednesday night, the cost of disposing of both trash and recycling is just, the trajectory for that is completely increased past anything that we can do. Also, an update, Nelson Terezos, our Economic Development Director, has had a series of conversations with Impact Residential Development following last month's, or last week's meeting about them looking at their plan in totality and addressing some of the parking issues. I've sat in on a couple of those meetings, and I believe that you, as a town council, will be seeing a new and different plan within the next few weeks as they continue their process. We have a World War II veteran from Enfield who is celebrating his 100th birthday on Sunday, and there is an effort afoot in order to do a little bit of a drive-by parade, similar to what was done during COVID for a lot of these types of events on Thursday. And as those events are confirmed with a date and time and starting point, I will send that out to all of you in case any of you are... that out to all of you in case any of you are able to participate. His name is Silvio Sarno, and his birthday is May 7th. Hold on. $275,000 to resurface the library. So again, in terms of needs versus wants and understanding the components of the budget, these are the conversations that we're going to be having over the course of the next few weeks. And finally, just to end on the note of the budget public hearing that you heard tonight, you know, if I can just ask, over the course of the next few days, you as council members, especially the newer members of the town council, revisit Chapter 6 of the Town Charter, which spells out specifically through Sections 1 through 4, your responsibilities for the budget, my responsibilities for the budget, how the budget is laid out. And I think that it would be important for you to reacquaint yourselves with that, based on some of the comments that were made during the public hearing that didn't really make a lot of sense. I would also encourage the public to read Chapter 6, Finance and Taxation, Sections 1 through 4, so they would understand the role of the Town Manager, the role of the Town Council, and how budgets are adopted in the town of Enfield. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ungary.
I just wanted to comment on your mention of the library. The Leisure Subcommittee met this past week, and that was one of our discussions, and I did reach out to Julie Cottino, who's president of the Rotary Club, and she said that they were interested in putting some money towards it, but she wasn't sure about the dollar amount.
Probably not $275,000.
No, no. But we are having that conversation, and we'll see if they can't contribute something.
And you know, part of the conversation that we've been having internally with staff is with the large amount of grants that are available, what some of these key projects are, the opportunity for them to be grant-funded. There's a lot of money that is flowing through CROG. In fact, our Public Works Director has had two of his roads projects funded through Latzip, which I'm sure he will talk about on Wednesday. We've had, through the ARPA state funding, we've had $105,000 flow into the senior center. So there are these opportunities to chunk off pieces of your list to make it less demanding for you as to how do you make these choices over the next couple of weeks. And so all of that is being handled internally, and hopefully we will have some options for you that even if you have to defer something, it fits into a category where we can go after other funding. And that's why we have not one, but now we've brought on a second grant writer in order to do some of this work for us, because I don't want to leave any grant dollar outside of what we can possibly pull into Enfield.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, I do not think we have any reports of special committees this week, and we're going to be moving on to Item 11A. We have two items for the Town Manager to discuss. The first one is the update concerning the proposed fixed tax assistance agreement for Fast Track Realty. I know Councilor Nelson has to recruise himself.
So over the course of three months where we've been discussing the request from the developer for the fixed tax assistance agreement, we have received feedback from the council. We've had outside council reviewing it, and tonight, what I put forward is the most recent reiteration of this. On the top, though, for reference, I did give you the Connecticut General Statute 12-65B. This is the state law that allows municipalities to do tax abatements, tax incentives, fixed tax assistance agreements. It's what gives us the power to do this. So I thought that that was important, because I'm sure that some of you were asked questions within the community about what we're doing and why we're doing it. This is what everybody in the state of Connecticut uses. All municipalities have this in their toolbox. This is an economic development tool. So we have chosen to use it in terms of the Fast Track Realty as a fixed tax assistance agreement. On the second page, you will see, I gave you the last five years of what the Mass Mutual site generated in taxes. So as you can see, it was about $1.3 million for several years, and then because it was an empty campus, this last year, it was revalued and devalued to, the taxes amounted to $762,419. What we're doing with this agreement is, we've taken the comments that we've heard, and we are holding Fast Track Realty to that tax bill. They will be paying the same tax bill that Mass Mutual has been paying at that level, based on a valuation that you'll see in your agreement. That's important, because we want to make sure that the town is held whole, that we do not take a hit on our grand list, which I think several of the councilors had talked about. We, as you can see from our budget situation, we need every tax dollar that we can in order to fund municipal services. So this is not an abatement. There is not any taxes being taken away from the town of Enfield, and I think Councilor Finger was clear about that in his questions two weeks ago. We need to be made whole. We are whole. The tax bill will continue to be paid at the rate that it's currently being paid. But in addition to that, we added in some other assurances. I direct you to Page 3. This agreement becomes invalid if any of the property taxes are not paid when due. It becomes invalid if they don't satisfy Connecticut General Statute 12-65B. There is also an additional penalty, which you will see at the bottom of Page 3. If for any reason, this ceases to be a recreational facility, or there's a breach of any part of this agreement, this whole zero-tax increase on, I mean, zero-tax valuation on any improvements goes away, and they owe us everything, 100% of the taxes, which I think is really important. And again, this fixed tax assistance agreement only happens at the end. This doesn't even get signed until there's a site plan, there's approvals, there's capital stack financing, and everything is in place. At that point, the town will come in and execute this agreement. There is zero risk for the town at this point with this agreement. It is part of what Mr. Borgia is going to use to go forward to secure the balance of his finances, and also to begin the process of application for bonds. So again, we're part of this larger piece of what's happening in order to advance this project forward. But yeah, at any point, if this project fails to go forward, you have not lost any tax dollars. The tax bill is continuing to be paid at the rate at which we expect and of which we scheduled. If there is a wetlands issue, if he withdraws from site plan, if he chooses to go to another town and look at another site, God forbid, although you never know with some of the challenges that remain for this, any of that happens, all that we're left with is an empty campus with buildings on it. There is no risk to the taxpayer, because the taxes will continue to be paid. If he does not become the purchase and sales agreement executed owner of this, Mass Mutual remains the owner. I'm pretty sure that Mass Mutual is going to continue to pay the taxes as they have for years. But then what happens? Well, even though they're a large company, I would assume that at some point, Mass Mutual will decide, how do I lower my tax obligation to the town of Enfield since I'm no longer using that campus? I would suggest that they would probably come in and remove the buildings, thus being taxed only on land, which is a very typical move for people who are no longer using an office park. I think we're all in agreement that the real estate market being what it is, there is not going to be a need or probably a tenant that is going to occupy the office park as it's currently situated. So again, it behooves us, in order to be good business partners, to do our part to make sure that this continues to be on a track where Mr. Borgia can continue to do his due diligence, start to check his boxes, enter the land-use process, secure funding, and hopefully, at the end of that process, whether it be five or six or nine months from now, we are poised and ready to execute something that will have a positive tax benefit, employment benefit, and also some residual economic spin-off for businesses in that area, as well as the general Enfield community. What we don't want is for this to be a piece that we can't execute, which holds him up from advancing all of these other pieces. So again, I would just reiterate, there is absolutely zero risk to you right now in approving what this is. The taxes remain the same. The only thing that he does not pay for at this point is after the first certificate of occupancy. So think about that. After all the improvements are done and everything is done for the buildings that he is telling us he will do, only after that first certificate of occupancy is issued does the zero-tax piece for any improvements kick in for 10 years. After 10 years, everything, the entire value of that campus and what he's done there goes back to 100%. But during those 10 years, you continue to collect the same amount of taxes and the valuation based on what it is, which right now is about $32 million. If we don't do something and that campus continues to devalue, your taxes will decrease, because it's going to be a vacant parcel. It took a $10 million hit during revaluation, which I just want to remind you about. A continued depreciation of that property does not serve us well either. I'm open if there's any questions.
Well, my first question that I do have, moving forward, we would just adopt this as just a vote, that, you know, there's no resolution, we don't need a resolution for this?
No.
We would just adopt the fixed tax agreement?
As presented.
As presented. Okay.
To be executed at a later date?
Correct.
When all the other pieces are in place.
And thank you for that, you know, your explanation.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion on this, Councilor Hopkins?
I think what you said, you need a motion to approve that we can have discussion.
Yes.
A motion to approve the fixed tax agreement as proposed.
Okay, the motion by Deputy Mayor Sakala, and a second by Councilor Finger.
I'll be quick.
Yeah.
Thank you for your explanation.
Discussion, go ahead.
And then just for the record, this is for Plan B, excludes Brainerd Park, and I think the other key provision here that I think that you're talking about protects the town, if there is a change of hands during this process, a lease, whatever it may be, from what we're calling FTR, Fast Track Realty, the town has a right to clawback this, which is huge.
Yes.
The town, the taxpayer should have the right, if it changes ownership's hands in any form. And again, I think for me, I appreciate you taking that, because that was the feedback that I gave to you specifically, so I appreciate that. And we should have a right, if something changes, to relook at an agreement.
Yes.
So I thank you, and I appreciate your explanation.
Yep, your language is included in Section 2, under the penalty.
Yep, appreciate it.
And then I was remiss in saying, and I think it was a few of you who talked about Board of Assessment Appeals, they waived their right to appeal during the time. They cannot go to Board of Assessment Appeals.
Correct. Councilor Hopkins.
Thank you. And through the mayor to the town attorney, so just as an additional protection, if I'm reading this right, if, so under Section 12-65B, the agreement is made with that particular entity, if they're no longer owning it, that would also potentially nullify the agreement. Is that right?
Yes, and there's a provision, I think it's Section 8, that requires town council approval before there's any assignment of this agreement.
Great, thank you so much. I like that additional protection.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, moving forward on this, once again, I am definitely in favor of this. Once again, we're at zero risk for this agreement. So I think we can have a vote on this.
I would suggest a roll call vote, even though it's just a motion.
Okay, Sheila, roll call vote on this.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Councilor Despard.
Four.
Councilor Finger.
Four.
Councilor Hopkins.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nelson, I'm sorry, Councilor Nelson has recused himself. Councilor Pizner.
Four.
And Councilor Ungary.
Four.
And Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against, and one abstention.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Item B, disposition of the town-owned asset Nathan Hale School. To the Town Manager, can you just give just a little update? I know that this is going to be an item that will be table, but if you could just give everybody just a quick update on this, that'd be great.
Yes, I spoke with Superintendent Drezyk twice today, and he has tried to make contact with someone who can give us an idea of when we could expect correspondence from the state regarding our request for forgiveness. He has not been able to do so, but later in the day, he informed me that someone within the state did give him a different contact that he is going to pursue in the morning. But as of this point, I would recommend that this item continue to be stabled, because we do not have any information about what the disposition was going to be from the state.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to, I think we can call Councilor Nelson back at this point. We'll send an SOO for Councilor Nelson.
No, McDonald's right there.
But in the meantime, we can move onward. Under New Business, A, the Consent Agenda, there are three items for Consent Agenda. Does anybody want to remove any for discussion on Items 1, 2, and 3?
I would want to remove Number 3.
Discussion on that? And this is the resolution to accept the Section 8-24 Positive Decision for Planning and Zoning Commission, the purchase of 810 Enfield Street, to set a public hearing? Okay. What's that? No. Discussion on this, Nick, or?
Yeah, just, I think it's important that-
Councilor Hopkins, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Mr. Mayor, I think it's important that the public fully consider the cost of this and the benefits that the town might be getting from this. So I, you know, I wouldn't support it going to a public hearing, I wouldn't give consent for that, but that's my two cents.
I apologize, Councilor. Hopkins, you don't support it going to a public hearing, or you do support? I apologize.
Do not.
Do not.
Okay.
Very. Okay. So do we have to vote on this separately now, or?
You would have a motion to remove Item 3 from the consent agenda.
Okay.
I make a motion to remove Item 3 from the consent agenda.
Okay, and a second by, excuse me, the motion was made by Councilor Nelson, and a second by Councilor Hopkins, to remove from the table.
It actually, Sheila just reminded me, it doesn't need a motion. If someone requests it removed, it's just removed.
It's just removed.
So then you have the vote on that particular item, and then revisit the rest of the consent.
I withdraw my motion.
Motions are withdrawn.
You guys set me up.
Somebody has to do it.
Is this a roll call vote, or is this a hand vote?
What are we voting on?
Yes, I'm kind of confused.
Well, now you need a motion to approve Item 3 on its own.
It's just removed from consent, Mayor.
Right.
The item is still going to be treated, it's just treated separately.
So do I need to make a motion, make a motion to-
Approve the consent agenda.
Approve Consent Agenda, Item 3?
No, 1 and 2.
1 and 2. And I second that 1 and 2.
1 and 2.
Councilor Despard has made the motion to accept 1 and 2, and a second by Deputy Mayor Sakala. All in favor? It looks, 10 in favor? Correct. All right. Item, excuse me?
We do not have an A2 in our package. I have 2 A3s, so that's where my confusion is at.
It's a CIP?
It's the CIP form that was given to everybody, yes.
So what do we do with this one?
I have no idea.
I'm lost.
I'm good now.
The consent agenda.
Sheila, just want to strike that was 9, 9 in favor.
Oh, Lori's gone.
Yeah.
Now we make the vote for Number 3.
Is there any discussion on 3 before we make the vote?
Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, just for the record, all we're doing is setting a public hearing, correct? Am I misreading the resolution?
We are setting a public hearing. That's all we're doing.
Through the mayor, just so Councilor Ludwig knows, we have already authorized me to do the purchase and sales agreement.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Councilor Nelson?
Just for clarification through the mayor, if I could get Councilman Hopkins to just explain his reasoning for not wanting a public hearing, I guess I'm not understanding, I'm not disagreeing or agreeing with you, I just don't understand the point. I think a few of us don't, so clarification?
Yeah, so as discussion on the motion here, I think this is a bad expense for the town, especially as we're considering, you know, trying to cut things to reduce the tax impact to the public. I want to draw more attention to this. I think the public should weigh in and probably will weigh in, given that most of the council seems to support this strongly. So I think that's important, and that might happen as a result of the public hearing now, but I think it's important to draw more attention to this particular item. It's $400,000 with probably a lot of other expenses added on. So I don't support, or I'm not against public hearings. So I don't support, or I'm not against public hearings, especially not for something like this, but I think more attention needs to be drawn here. I, of course, voted not to move forward on this agreement at all, I think it's a waste of money, so, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilor Despard.
Just for clarification purposes, this is the building that last time we voted to invest to put bathrooms on? Okay, thank you.
Correct. Councilor Mangini.
Right, just for clarification, I'm totally confused. What we're voting on with this specific resolution is to bring it to a public hearing, am I correct?
That's all we're voting on.
Thank you.
Yes, all right, so, roll call. Sheila, do we need a roll call for this, or a hand vote?
I would take a roll call vote.
Okay, let's, okay.
But forgive me, do we have a, did anyone motion it and second it? Did I read that as a motion? Did I miss that? I'm sorry.
I thought we had a motion and a second.
I know we had a motion and second for consent, Item 1 and 2, I might have missed 3.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Number 3 from the consent agenda.
Okay, Councilor Despard and second by Councilor Mangini. Any further discussion?
I'm just going to say that I think the public has all the right to put input in on a decision that we make, so I would never vote against a public hearing. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to read the resolution. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby schedule a public hearing regarding the purchase of property known as 810 Enfield Street to be held on May 15, 2023, to begin at 6:55 PM in the council chambers of the Enfield Town Hall, which is located at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, in order to receive public comment, date prepared May 1, 2023, prepared by Ellen Zapu Sasu, the town manager. Councilor Mangini and a second by Councilor Nelson. Sheila, roll call.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Councilor Despard.
Four.
Councilor Finger.
Four.
Councilor Hopkins.
Against.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nelson.
Four.
Councilor Pisner.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sicola.
Four.
That's 8 in favor, 1 against.
Item C, discussion resolution. Once again, this is the resolution, be it resolved that the town council approves the recommendation of the town attorney to serve a Rule 68 offer of compromise in the matter of Sarah Hernandez versus Town of Enfield, as discussed in our executive session, date prepared April 27, 2023. The Council Mangini and a second by Deputy Mayor Sicola. Sheila, roll call.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Councilor Despard.
Four.
Councilor Finger.
Four.
Councilor Hopkins.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nelson.
Four.
Councilor Pisner.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sicola.
Four.
9 in favor, none against.
Item D, discussion resolution, be it resolved that the town council approves the recommendation of the town manager to enter into the agreement for purposes of collection of services in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with Green Law PC, subject to review and approval of the town attorney regarding the Grainger matter, as discussed in our executive session. Once again, and it's Councilor Mangini and a second by Councilor Nelson. Any discussion on this? Seeking non, Sheila, roll call.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Councilor Despard.
Four.
Councilor Finger.
Four.
Councilor Hopkins.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nelson.
Four.
Councilor Pisner.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sicola.
Four.
9 in favor, none against.
Item E, this is the resolution authorizing the town manager to enter an agreement with Green Law PC, be it resolved that the town manager, Ellen Zapu Sasu, is authorized to enter an agreement for the purposes of collection of services in the name of and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with Green Law PC, subject to review and the approval of the town attorney in the matter of David Driscoll health insurance reimbursement, as discussed in our executive session, date prepared May 1, 2023.
So moved.
Councilor Nelson and a second by Councilor Mangini. I think we've discussed this. Sheila, roll call.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Councilor Despard.
Four.
Councilor Finger.
Four.
Councilor Hopkins.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nelson.
Four.
Councilor Pisner.
Four.
And Deputy Mayor Sicola.
Four.
9 in favor, none against.
All right, next, Item F. Item F is discussion resolution, the resolution authorizing the town manager to sign a lease agreement with Collins Farm Hill Farm. Be it resolved that the town manager is empowered to enter into the attached lease agreement in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with Collins Farm LLC, date prepared April 25, 2023, prepared by the town manager's office.
So moved.
Councilor Nelson and a second by Councilor Mangini. Any discussion? Councilor Nelson.
I was just wondering, through the mayor to the town manager, can we take this payment in the form of ice cream? I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. We could do a field trip. Sheila, roll call.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Councilor Despard.
Four.
Councilor Finger.
Four.
Councilor Hopkins.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nelson.
Four.
Councilor Pisner.
Four.
And Deputy Mayor Sicola.
Four.
9 in favor, none against.
Okay, next, we're back to public communications. Please state your name and address for the record, you'll have 3 minutes, maybe short, no, I'm just kidding.
I may have to follow up with an email, I don't know if I can squeeze it in in 3 minutes, but, "Town manager, thank you for your advocacy regarding the software package. I've been involved in those, the little meetings we've been having, we got another one coming up Saturday, they've been good." But, you know, that solves the problem 3 years, and I was, I'm for it, but that solves the problem 3 years from now when the registrations renew. It doesn't do anything for Lover's Lane today or tomorrow. And, let's see, I don't do well without my notes here. Regarding, I respectfully disagree with your statements, Councilor Nelson. If I understand it correctly, we're fighting this issue, we're addressing this issue through the town council, through planning and zoning, when it comes up, through the Alcohol Commission, when it comes up, and, surprise to me, through ZBA the other night. If anybody watched that on YouTube, that was a very interesting and creative argument, thankfully it wasn't accepted. So who knows what's ahead of us, you know? So anything could happen. I believe the town manager is directly responsible for parking in this town, rather than the police chief. And I don't know what your relationship is with her, how much autonomy she has, if you want it done, does she do it, or does she have autonomy to say yes or no to that? I don't know. But I see parking as a town council, town manager issue, and there are hundreds of no parking signs. There is no parking signs on Enfield Street, right in front of Jimmy's Pub, then there's the Scannick. So I do believe you have the authority to deal with the parking issues, that's my opinion. Now, with regards to planning and zoning, they can indirectly, and so can the Alcohol Commission, indirectly affect parking, because based on the permits that they do or do not issue, parking is obviously affected. You know, the lazy little Jimmy's Pub for years and years had maybe entertainment on a Sunday afternoon, which nobody gave any thought to, but it wasn't an everyday thing. But anyway, if he has, if he has granted his entertainment licenses, there will be a lot of parking on Francis Avenue. Just think, if you don't renew the temporary ban, the streets will be full. So entertainment has an effect on parking, and I'm fighting, I will be fighting through planning and zoning to keep the entertainment to a minimum, nonexistent, or ideally off-site contracted parking, which is the wonderful solution that hasn't occurred yet. Even then, they're going to park on our street, because it's the most convenient place. So somehow, we have to address parking. Even if he leases 100 places, some are still going to park on our street. Also, you mentioned site plan. Site plan application versus special permit application, I believe, are different. Hopefully, he's going through a special permit application, hopefully that was a mistake on your part. But if he goes through special permit application in Section 9.10.4, whatever it is, calls for a real requirement for all of his parking to be off-site, off-street. Whereas Section 10 is a little looser, but Section 9 encompasses Section 10. So he's going to have to find parking somewhere, and then there's the thing about whether his customers will use it. And if you just don't renew the temporary ban, and I'm not asking for a temporary ban, I'm asking for a permanent ban, it's going to be a mess like last summer. And we did a petition, and halfway through it, you know, I, gee, change.org, we don't do this regularly. So there's going to be a change.org petition for Highland Park and the Three Side Streets, and, you know, we're hitting this yet another way. I mean, 26 people on Francis Avenue don't like it, 25 of them vote. We'll see how many, you know, we'll see what the community support is for this. Hopefully, we can get a lot of people telling you that they don't like the situation, and that then becomes a voting issue. So we have a real problem on Francis Avenue, and please, please address it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council? Jack?
Don't worry, I'm not going to take up too much of your time. Jack Sheridan, 72 Cannon Road. Thank you for bringing up the 810 Enfield Street purchase. I think that, I mentioned it when we purchased it, or entered into an agreement for it, and it was about COVID, and the fact that you're coming in to pay your taxes. And I said, "We spent $400,000 when all's left to do is put a stamp on an envelope and send a tax payment in." So think about that when you're deciding, because you're going to add more costs after you own the building, you're taking it off the revenue rolls. Amen.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council?
Susan Budd, 2 Francis Avenue. I think Bob covered some of the questions that I have. I feel like I'm in a sinking boat here. Councilman Nelson, you said you, the town council's not the place to be for parking issues?
I'll discuss it.
Okay, all right. Planning and zoning tells us they are for the entertainment, they have nothing to do with parking, so that's understood. The venues that the pubs have, which is the entertainment, is causing the parking issues. Are we in the right spot? I know I've been here for 6 months now, complaining and telling you, are we in the right spot to complain for, you know, a decision to be made? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay.
My name's Elaine DeRoy. I live at 23 Francis Avenue, and my concern is about the parking on our street. If we could have the sign up with parking permits only, residents only, violators be told at their own expense, maybe that will help deter some of this problem? But if we're going to continue to have parking on our street, even if it's on one side, the issues are still going to happen. People are going to start walking up from the pub all the way up to the end of the street, and they're going to be noisy. You can't guarantee that there's not going to be any problems, hopefully not, but there still could be. The other night, I was walking on my street, a motorcycle comes up our street, from the very end of, the beginning of the street to the end, going at least 50 miles an hour, right past me, up and down. A car yesterday afternoon came up, did the same thing. There were 3 cars going by our house last night, 1 o'clock in the morning. So there are plenty of issues, and I just hope that you take in consideration the residents on our street. It's a quiet street, and it's a respectful street, and we like to keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council this evening? All right, public communications are declared over. Any final, any final counselor communications before we adjourn? Councilor Nelson?
To address Susan, your concerns, if the entertainment that he's applying for is denied at planning and zoning, the problem goes back to what it was before all of this started. So it would really fix itself, because you just said, the entertainment is what you're fighting. We have zero control over that, but planning and zoning does have parking regulations that they should follow, they can make exceptions to it, and that's where you would state your piece, show the pitchers why they shouldn't make exceptions to it, and then they can stop that. We can't stop any of that. All we could do is do permanent no parking on the street, and that's still not working, because we have 6-hour or whatever, 12-hour no parking now, and there's still feuds going on, there's still pitchers being created. So is the entertainment still happening? I'm hearing they're still having DJs and stuff like that. I don't know for a fact for myself, but I have no reason to believe somebody's lying to us. So once planning and zoning makes their decision, and knowing the parking there, I'd be hard pressed to think that they would approve something like this, and that probably explains why it's not there to begin with, because there is no parking for it. At that point, I would think the problem would, like I said, go back to the way it was, because I know, ever since I've known you guys, there's been issues with cars parking there, and, you know, you're not going to shut the business down, but it would revert back to better days. We'll leave it at, I mean, I don't know how else to say it, but, but the parking ban was just to get you to the planning and zoning hearings, and I don't understand why it's taken so long to get there. And, you know, in July, somebody said July, it should be there, and we should have an answer there. So if it passes, somehow, some way it passes, then yeah, I would probably come back here, and I would raise holy hell. But until that, it's not our decision, and we can't influence planning and zoning. It's in the charter, we have no say over them. Their commissioners are smart enough to watch what's going on in town and see things, so, you know, again, go to their meetings and speak up, because that's the place to do it. That's where you're going to get the most results for all your efforts. Bring pitchers, bring a package for every single one of the commissioners, and just state your, "You used to pack this room, that's the room you need to pack."
Okay, thank you, Councilor Nelson. Councilor Hopkins?
Thank you, just briefly to answer the question, I do agree with Councilor Nelson that, that that board has some relevancy here, but the council does have the authority to regulate parking, you know, per the state of Connecticut, as the town's general policing powers. And I think it's good for us to be thinking about what happens in either scenario. I really don't want this to continue happening for you guys, I think it's wrong, and the council, I think, has some options to do that, whether that's towing people who have unpaid parking tickets or veteran enforcement, but we do need to see what happens on the other side.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Hopkins. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Councilor Finger and a second by Councilor Mangini, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Good night, Mr. Nelson.